Six.
Good evening and welcome to the Select Board Meeting for Monday, July 11th, 2022. Those in attendance, Chairman Russell S. Fox, Vice Chairman Doug Mogulyn, Clerk Jason Perone, Administrative Chief Administrative Officer Carl Seinhart is on Zoom. We do have Administrative Assistant Robin Solak here with us. Before we begin the meeting, if we could do a pledge of allegiance to the flag. And Matt, would you lead us in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, first thing on the agenda is public comments. This is an opportunity for someone that would like to speak something that is not on the agenda, this is your opportunity to speak. I'd ask if you would speak, I'm going to ask you to come forward. We have a microphone. Please state your name and address. Is there anyone here that would like to make a public comment that's in the room? I do not see any hands going up. Is there anyone on Zoom? Use the hand raise function if you can, or just start talking. Going once, going twice? Okay, then we're going to knock off a couple of things before our first appointment at six oh five. All right, so let's see. Acknowledge payroll warrant number two, three, zero, one dated seven, six, 2022 and the amount of $339,213.47. Acknowledge payable special warrant number two, three, zero, one B dated seven, one, two, and the amount of $1,945,908.80. Acknowledge payable warrant number two, 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 nine B dated six, 29, 22 and the amount of $572,688.53. Now, need a motion to approve the open session minutes dated six, 27, 22.
Doug Mogulyn will make the motion to approve the open session minutes of six, 27.
Jason Perone, second. Roll call vote, Russell Fox, aye.
Doug Mogulyn, aye.
Jason Perone, aye. Okay. The first thing, accept donation of 200, excuse me, $2,436 for the Southwick Public Library from the Shurtlift Children's Services, Inc. Need a motion?
Doug Mogulyn will make a motion to accept the donation of $2,436.
Jason Perone, second the motion. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogulyn, aye.
Jason Perone, aye. And very grateful, the Shurtlift Foundation is very generous. Our library gets that, a donation every year from them. And it's, it's really a nice organization and we're very thankful for what they do. Discharge of a CDBG loan, which is our Community Black Block Grant Program for 197 North Lane, Granville, Mass. Kenneth W. Africano.
Africano, yes, and you, you need to realize, Mr. Chim, and this was a, a, a regional CDBG grant that Southwick had partnered with Granville FAW, but we're the lead community that handles all the administrative paperwork.
Correct, thank you for mentioning that, Mr. Seinhart. I did neglect that it is a regional grant, and that's why sometimes we see people from Granville or Talon on there. Need a motion for that?
Doug Mogulyn will make that motion.
Jason Perone, second. Okay, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogulyn, aye.
Jason Perone, aye. Okay. Accept a donation of $580 for the Council on Aging Companion Program from the Sarah Gillette Services Elderly, Inc. Need a motion?
Doug Mogulyn will make a motion to accept that donation.
Jason, sorry. Jason Perone will second the motion. Okay, Russ Fox, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogulyn, aye.
Jason Perone, aye. Okay, again, very grateful. Miss Sullivan is starting up that companion program. I think that's going to be a tremendous asset to people that have difficulty getting around. It's, it's a great program and hopefully we'll be successful in getting that other chase car slash van from those former federal monies. And that should also be made available. Okay, I have six oh five, so we're going to have a discussion with Andy Reardon. I'm told he's zooming in, is that correct? Is Andy on? Andy, can you hear us? Andy?
Yes, I can.
You can hear us. All right, sir.
Can you? Can you?
Could you speak a little louder? And we seem to have a little static, Andy.
All right, yeah, I can speak a little louder, absolutely.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, you've put in an application that you'd like to be considered for the Conservation Commission, and you've submitted some written material. But this is your opportunity to, to go over that with us and make any statement you would like, so the floor is yours, sir.
All right, I was kind of prepared that this would be more of a question and answer format, really didn't create a presentation.
Okay. Well, let me, let me kind of read some of the things that you've given us, how's that?
Yep.
Is that okay, Andy?
That sounds good, yeah.
Okay, having lived in Handover, Medfield, and Natick, Mass before moving to Southwick, gives me unique insight into the expansive growth that can occur in a town. They need to conserve Southwick's natural resources while moving forward is critical to maintaining a way of life I have come to expect and cherish. By living in Southwick, my work involved traveling Western Mass daily, giving insight to the growth that has been occurring throughout the region, reinforcing my position of conservation in the responsible expansion. As a community leader in Southwick for the last 25 years, I've participated in many conservation projects around town, most recently spending many hours working on the recently acquired North Pond property, Boy Scout Troop 114. This property, along with the adjoining preservation lands, are involving, an involving gem that are on the track to becoming as cherished and important to our community as Central Park is to New York City. Southwick has many other unique landscapes and resources that contribute to the fabric of town. Many of these are unfamiliar to the majority of our residents and require avocation to ensure their protection. And it's signed, "Thank you for your consideration time, Andy Reardon."
Now, that pretty much covers it. Like, like I said, in my employ, I did travel Western Mass a lot, and I've seen a lot of the different developments going on in Western Mass. And then, growing up in Eastern Mass, Metro West, Boston specifically, watching that area explode, you know, I've seen that change. And in Southwick, I think it's kind of on the cusp of that, being a suburb of Hartford and Springfield. So I think I can bring some insight and hopefully some guidance to that. I don't have formal education in this area, but I have a lot of informal education with the time I've spent around town doing the different scouting events and the different conservation events.
Andy, are you familiar with the order of conditions that we signed with the fishing game for the North Pond Conservation Area?
I have not read that specifically, no.
Okay.
I know, you know, I own property in Southwick, and I've been dealing with conservation for 20 years. I've read a lot of information that's specific to my property and the wetlands that are on that. I'm not familiar with the North Pond at all.
Okay, thank you.
My work on North Pond was strictly, you know, cleanup and helping to develop some pathways or clear some existing pathways. So I, you know, I don't know how that fits into the contract the town has with the state.
Smogel?
Nothing at this time, I've known Dave. I know, sorry, Andy, I know him and Dave for a long, long time. So I've known Andy for probably 20 plus years. So I don't have a lot of questions here.
Jason?
The only one I would ask, since I don't know Mr. Reardon, is what brought you to want to be on the Conservation Commission?
What compelled me to be on that particular commission?
Yeah.
To some extent. Let me back up a little bit. I was asked to be on planning board quite a few times a number of years ago.
We're breaking up, Andy.
And I was reluctant to do that. Pardon me?
We were breaking up there, we lost you, Andy. If you could repeat what you said.
I, I have been asked to serve on other boards over the years. I own a business in town, and it was a quite, quite a lengthy process establishing my business. I had a lot of experience with planning and conservation. Now, my kids are older and I'm no longer running my own business 100% of the time. I have time to come back and start working with the boards in town. Almost like a second career to start here.
Any other questions? That'll be it. Okay.
I guess that same question could be posed to any volunteer on any board, couldn't it, all the three selectmen? What could, what would compel you to do what you're doing? I'm sure it's not the money.
Yeah. I can guarantee it, it's not that.
Right. I'd like to see Southwick develop, I'd like to see Southwick develop in a way that keeps it a cool place to be.
Andy, just for clarification, and, and you're, I know you have been involved with scouting, you and your wife and your family and your children for many years. Working on trails and trail preservations and making sure whatever you take into the woods comes out, that's something that you've been teaching kids for many years, correct?
Um, yeah, I've also, where I am now actually is a YMCA camp in New Hampshire. I've been involved with this camp for about 37 years, and that's what I do here as well, you know, is teaching kids about conservation and also about self-preservation.
All right, thank you, Andy. Anything else? Andy, we thank you very much.
All right, well, thank you, and we look forward to being, being around.
Okay, thank you, Andy. Safe travels, Andy. All right, we're a little ahead of schedule, our next appointment is at six twenty, so we got about eight minutes to go back over and see if we can take care of some more action items, so if everybody could go to the action items. Okay, the next thing I have here. Okay, we need to ratify and allow the chair to sign off on the Russo Bar Contract Amendment Number Two in the amount of $93,000 for Town Hall Roof and HVAC Project.
Yes, Mr. Chim, and that relates to the vote taken by Town Meeting in May for the bond authorization that then puts in motion the need to do the, both the project management for the roof project, which was already designed and bid out, and you've awarded it. That contract will be coming to you any day to sign for the three of you. And then the HVAC components are being finalized right now. The draft bids package is being reviewed by the Buildings and Ground Supervisor and the Clerk of the Works. So we're actively underway with these two components that are paid for from that single borrowing authorization in this contract amendment is to support those designer services.
I see our head of our Buildings and Grounds has just walked in, Mr. Sutton. Mr. Sutton, would you like to come to the front of the room and use the microphone and tell us where we are with the HVAC at this point?
Hello, hi, how are you doing tonight?
You better use the microphone, David.
How's everybody doing tonight?
Wonderful, good, thank you.
I've got downloaded all the plans I got from BAR in Ken, and I've been reading through them the last couple of days, and it looks so far so good. Art's on vacation right now, and as soon as I finish reading it all, and probably 80, 85% through it, but it'll all start on track, the timelines look good, the numbers are good, and I'm ready to move forward with it.
And when this is done?
It's going to be a happy building.
No more opening windows in the middle of the winter?
No, sir.
No more closing windows?
We can shut out the garden hose leading to the condenser outside.
Okay, all right, we're going to hold you to this.
All right, I like it.
I mean, it's been 25 years, it's about time we fixed it.
Yeah, what was nice is that they sent out their lead engineer, met with me a few weeks back, and we toured the entire building, him and I, and picked up on a lot of things that was missed in the first quarter, which was nice. They over, they over-engineered some of the areas and engineered others, and we were able to horse swap and make some trades. And one of them was this building, this room right here, which was going to be a big bone of contention, Doug knows what this could be like at any given time. 10 people, you're freezing, 30 people, you sweat. They were going to put one unit in here, and they had small rooms that had several single units speeding up. We eliminated those and added those to other zones, and we split this one. So it's going to be working in stages. The system will be able to grow with the demand of the room. So that'll come up really nice.
Thank you, David. Since we have you up here and we have a few minutes before our next appointment, you want to talk about any of the projects Building and Grounds has been working on? Because I've noticed several changes at Town Hall.
Well, we've got a lot of things around here, we've got a whole bunch of pain going on. One of the things that we tried to do is to look through all the complexes, in fact, I had taken, taken Jason for a ride and came to tour of all the building to see where we were at and where we could do to make things some improvements. So we've been going around, if you notice the backyard, as you come into the building, it's all been redone, remodeled, and there's a couple areas that are still being reconstructed. We rebuilt the town beach, we rebuilt the, the area out here for playing. And then, of course, all the great things we've done, the Wally Park. We've got walls going up, we're adding a actual workstation to the police department. For the last, I guess, decade, they've been using a folding table and filing cabinet to get a lot of their paperwork together and put down, so Bob asked for a, for an improvement in there and wanted some cabinets, so we're going to be putting up a wall and adding a real honest-to-goodness workstation. That's one of the other things, we're going to be starting in a couple of weeks upstairs to put the walls in, the land use room, to make it look more like a people's house instead of a storage closet. That'll come a long way. The list is long, and if I don't watch it, Laura's going to kill me.
I personally like to thank you, I know that the, during the budget process, we didn't get the funding for a tractor, and you brought your own personal tractor to reestablish the volleyball court, so thank you very much for volunteering your equipment to do that.
Sometimes you just got accomplished the mission.
So, Mr. Chairman, will you be acting on that contract amendment vote?
Uh, yes, sir. Mr. Steinhardt is putting me back on the agenda, so thank you, David. I need a motion to authorize the chair to sign this Amendment Number Two for the amount of $93,000 with Russo and BAR. Don't move. Second. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogulyn, aye.
Jason Perone, aye. Okay, Robin, do you have the original to sign? No, but we already signed it. Okay.
Yeah, you heard me say it.
All right. All right, the next thing is we have an appointment with the Southwick Civic Fund, Kind of Landscaping, Southwick VFW, Southwick American Legion, Jim Pottem from the Congregational Church, and others to discuss the war memorial improvements in the center of town. And Mr. Diddy, are you going to be the lead spoke for it?
Why don't you use that mic?
Yes, sir. I'm going to ask everybody to use the mic because of the acoustics.
For what?
Acoustics.
Acoustics. Wonderful. So tonight, if you're interested, first, and I'm not going to say the names if that gets me in front of the paper. Matt, enter, George with the word.
Harrison Brown.
Rick Marley. Jim Pottem. Eric Schub. Adam Goode. Wonderful. So, so these are my team, and as you know, the others are the great folks that will be doing that memorial before. So get you everything on a few things, although we talked a lot about the memorial. Yes, I'm sure it's $1,500 on fireworks, so you don't have to ask me, just write the checks. The letter you wrote last week for me with the church and the food pantry for the civic fund, it worked. We put a deal together this weekend, we'll be acquiring in a few weeks. So the food pantry is going to stay where it is and possibly expand like I would like to do with a few things in that side of town. So you're up to date. One memorial. And the landscaping has contributed a good million hours and the redesign of what you see in front of us, we're trying to call that our, I guess, our 100-year fingerprint or 100-year footprint for the next 100 years. So what you see is what you get. We're short one tree, one bench, but we haven't figured out, wasn't going to redesign everything just to show you guys kind of like, it's a working progress, but it's 99% there. We are short some money when it comes to the water. We're going to irrigate that whole facility around there, and there's two fountains flowing in, so I need from you folks tonight, or Mr. Steinhardt's world during the week, we're short around $800 for plumbing, which is for your DPW to bring the water line in next to our control panel, then we'll take it from there. So you guys can look at some other options for funding, I would appreciate that. We didn't plan on that $800. They take care of the sidewalks and everything else, of course, it's just we'll have to pay that $800. We hope to start within two weeks, once the water line gets put in, and we will be done by labor day. So Veterans Day is in November, we should have a decent amount of grass and can be, be able to walk on it. I think it's only about a three-week project for us, and it's just a matter of a long coming back in. Any questions, you guys?
No, but just want to say thank you very much for that other thing, for the Methodist Church taking that.
Yeah, that's going to be an exciting time for the civic fund and a lot of things moving forward.
Preserving a building, we're keeping the food, keeping the food pantry active in the town of Southwick, and so thank you very much for your whole organization, for the dedication.
Well, we hope the triple size of that pantry can be.
Excellent.
That's a bigger, that's a bigger picture.
And we are still selling, I'm looking at the former chairman of the 250th, we are still selling 250 merchandise. Did I say something? We're asking for donations for this merchandise. I think I.
The book is still available?
The book is still available, and I believe the Southwick Forest has probably around $200 in cash to give you this week, you know, merchandise that, as people have donated. But we do have plenty of merchandise left, so if there's anyone that would love to have these collectibles, and that book is, is wonderful, it's a great birthday gift, anniversary gift, I'm giving two to my wife for the anniversary.
I'll leave that alone.
All right.
Any other questions? Want to add anything?
No, I just want to thank you for the work on the church, work on the fireworks, and a bunch of other projects that you guys have taken on and done a spectacular job with. Thank you.
We did have that out at the last event down there, and, you know, we tweaked it, we listened to a lot of veterans and what they had to say, and we added that into our final draft.
Awesome. Jason? No, I have nothing. Okay.
All right, well, thank you for your time, folks.
Thank you, and thank you all the organizations for being involved. Scott, thank you very much for all your volunteer efforts, tremendous. With that, Mr. Steinhardt?
Yes.
Out of curiosity, would we happen to have funds of around $100 in our gift account?
Uh, yes, you would, Mr. Chairman.
Would anyone like to consider a motion, since this is going to be starting in two weeks? I'd like to motion. Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Perone.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to give the Southwick Civic Fund an $800 donation towards the plumbing so they can connect the water. So, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogulyn, aye.
Jason Perone, aye. Okay. Robin, you want to make sure that check gets out to them as quickly as possible? All right, we're back to, well, 6:30 almost. Is, I see the Deputy Chief slash soon-to-be chief, is the chief coming or are you going to be? Okay, then why don't we take you, because you have two gentlemen with you, and you'd like to make a presentation, and we'd like to help you make that presentation.
So good evening, everybody. As it has become somewhat of a tradition here, for the fire department and for the town, when we have firefighters who complete training, get sent to the level of firefighter one, firefighter two, we have a presentation. They're recognized by their efforts on the fire ground as the distinction between the yellow helmet versus a black helmet is probationary firefighters. So they started out as probationary firefighters, both Cooper Smith and Steve Shaw, that was the partner for about a year and a half, both have put in a pretty long amount of time, nearly 300 hours, with the program certification through the Department of Fire Services in Springfield, last fire gap. And that was commitment of a couple nights a week, plus a lot of weekends, and they started in March, they just wrapped up the program recently, both have graduated the program successfully, they've both been certified for firefighter one, firefighter two. So a big accomplishment for both of them, and it's time to like to present them with their yellow helmets for their efforts and for their great attitude through the whole program as well, too, because it's not an easy program, and their recognition on the fire ground now is that they're ready, willing, capable, and so many to do the job.
Who can take pictures? Ken's going to take them.
That'd be perfect. Okay, why don't we go over here, gentlemen? Holy crap, Mr. Shaw, I think the last time I saw you, you were five. I'll probably take an open meeting log to play for that, come on out. All right. Yeah. One to him, I'm going to say one to him, like that, on the count of three, we're all going to say five. One, two, three, five. Let's try it again. Got it? All right. One more, one more. At least everybody's smiling, that's good news.
All right. We have taken care of all our appointments, is that correct? Okay, so we are back on action items at this time. And the next thing I have is Mr. Brown on Zoom, or is?
He was before, he's here.
Randy, we're going to be talking about the bulky, rigid plastics in the contract that you're recommending, would you like to? Randy, we're going to be talking about the bulky rigid plastics in the contract that you're recommending. Would you like to chime in?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So you have a letter from you and a contract from the MRF. This is for a one-year contract to provide services to collect bulky rigid plastics. So these are the bulky plastic items that can't be recycled through the, through the metal, the, um, plastic and metal bin, and sorry, plastic and glass bin. But they are items that can be recycled. So think of like your lawn chairs, your laundry baskets. We do collect those materials at the transfer station. So this is a contract to collect those and dispose of them through the, through the Springfield MRF. And we've been using this contract for, I think, the past five or six years, as long as we've been collecting bulky rigid plastics at the transfer station. So it's a win-win. You know, there's some cost savings to the town by doing this as well. So and we're also able to recycle that material.
Right, I see. Randy, if I look at it, we're only talking about tops fifteen tons a year. So it's a very small number at the end, at the end of the day.
Yeah, it's a small universe. Absolutely.
Yeah.
But it is a, it is a savings.
Right. Thank you, Randy, for all the hard work you do. Any motion, motion to approve this contract?
Doug Mogul will make the motion.
Second, Jason Peron, second. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perone, aye. Okay. Do we have the originals designed tonight? If not, it'll be on the desk for people to sign tomorrow. Oh, we got it. All right. Next thing we have is to approve the agreement with the Southwick Police Office Coalition for fiscal twenty-one through fiscal twenty-three. This was approved at the town meeting with the funding for the first fiscal period, but we need to have a formal vote to sign off as a board. I need a motion.
Doug Mogul will make a motion to ratify this.
Russ Fox is going to second it. We're going to have a roll call vote.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Russ Fox, aye. Jason Perone abstained. Okay. All right. Okay, the next thing I have is to accept the donation totaling eight hundred twenty-four dollars and fifty cents for the Southwick Animal Medical Gift Account. This is from numerous people and businesses, checks for one thirty-seven, fifty, fifty dollars, a hundred dollars, fifty dollars, fifty dollars. Just, just wonderful, the support that we have. It's not just for people in Southwick. Other people in other communities have also donated. We do take care of animals from Agewang, we're a Springfield also. So this is very helpful so that these animals can get the medical attention they need. Until hopefully we find homes for them. So I need a motion to accept the amount of eight hundred twenty-four dollars and fifty cents for the Southwick Animal Medical Gift Account.
Doug Mogul will make that motion with our thanks.
Jason Peron, second. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye. Jason Perone, aye. Steinhardt, are you sneezing or you had a comment?
No, I was coughing.
Okay. Next is to accept a donation of five hundred dollars in memory of Roy and Marlene Banish. From, excuse me, Benson, I apologize, from Robin Wilson, their daughter. And also three hundred dollars in memory of Roy and Marlene Benson from Sue. And Carl, give me help on this one. Gil, Gil, Giloney?
Giloney.
Okay.
Giloney.
And, and.
Giloney.
This family has been wonderful. Roy and Marlene did a lot, especially Roy was involved with our council on aging. And this family helped donate to the Western Jamboree that we had up at Wally Park a few weeks back. So I mean, just, just wonderful that they continue to donate money in Roy and Marlene's name to help our seniors. So I need a motion to accept both the five hundred and the three hundred dollar donation.
Doug Mogul will make that motion with our thanks.
Jason Peron, second. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perone, aye. Okay. The next thing I have is a Pioneer Valley Planning Commission Fiscal Twenty Community Assistant Program. This is a amount, payment amount of four thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars and fifty-eight cents. And this is for the Fiscal Twenty Project, which is Northlake Avenue Engineering and Design Housing Rehab Program, not just in Southwick, but also Bramble, Talon, and our community food pantry, helping them out, plus the administration. So again, the amount, four thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars and fifty-eight cents. I need a motion.
So moved.
Jason Peron, second. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye. Robin, you have that original or no? Okay, we'll, we'll sign this one then. All right, the next thing I see in mine is a copy of the Business West article that Mr. Steinhardt and I did a few weeks ago.
Yeah, I have not been able to read the whole thing in its entirety to see if it's, in terms of the accuracy of it, Mr. Jim.
Well, it's, it's, it's like I've found out over the years with any reporter. Sometimes mistakes are made. And I don't think it's intentional, but they have me saying that we do an alum treatment every year, which we don't. Do it every twenty-five, thirty years. But I, I think the general article in itself is, I think, is positive for the town of Southwick. So I think that's, that's, that's the bottom line. You know, we're not here to fact check and, and go over everything, any article in, in Business West or the local newspapers, you know. Unfortunately, a lot of people read whatever they read. Oh, it's in the newspaper. It's got to be the fact one. A lot of times there's missed quotes. But that's for you gentlemen to read. Doug, you're up next for next year's article.
Fantastic.
They're waiting for it.
Looking forward to it. It's been a while.
It's been a while. So waiting for it. All right, we're going to new business. Mr. Steinhardt, you want, oh, I apologize. We have the deputy chief here and future chief, Rich Stefanowitz. Rich, and you have a program that you'd like to discuss with us, and I don't know where the microphone went.
Right here.
Oh, there it is.
Okay, good evening. I want to talk a little bit about and introduce a program. It's called Pulse Point. And it's an app that's available for anybody to download on their phone. And it is supported within communities that want to have a program that allows first responders as well as lay responders, rescuers, to respond to a cardiac arrest that's in progress. So the way the system works is if somebody were to call nine-one-one, the dispatch center would field the call. And they can tell based on the location, the location systems that they replace, if this is a residential building or a commercial public building. So the first thing they do is differentiate between the two. And based on what they have, they then send out the notifications. So it's a push notification like you'd get if you were following the Red Sox on ESPN and somebody scored, you know, a run in the bottom inning. So similar to that, you get this notification that tells you that the person is experiencing cardiac arrest. And then people that are lay responders would get the notifications for public places. Rescuers, such as off-duty fire police EMS, would get all locations, including private locations. So they would be able to address that differently in their response, but also the goal is to get people on teams quickly as possible. So the idea, the idea is that once this notification goes out, it's reportedly within walking distance. If you're familiar with the area, you can respond and initiate CPR. They also have a second component of it, which is the AED locating system. So there's a whole list of where the AEDs are throughout town. And let's say we had something happen here at town hall immediately. Responders would be notified, but also be a notification if there's an AED located the back of the building on the first floor, somebody would then this responding, either pick it up on their way through, or somebody else could be sent to get that. So this program was initiated from Westfield Fire in the beginning by Deputy Seth Ellis. And this is something that he started looking at three years ago, and definitely took a real sideways turn once COVID hit because there just was too much going on for EMS to focus on something like this. So this is something he wanted to bring back to the table. So there's several partners involved in the program. Right now it's Westfield State University, Westfield Fire, Westfield PD, Westfield themselves. And Seth had called me and asked if Southwick might be interested. And I said, we certainly want to take a look at this because it sounded a very promising program. Pulse Point is a not-for-profit organization. They have a heavy presence out west in both Oregon, California, Nevada, and then parts of the Midwest. Ohio has a very strong concentration. And then it jumps over to New York and then it kind of thins out there and they're starting to gauge populated down in Florida. I have a colleague who works in Florida and I saw her community was one of them. It was using Pulse Point. So I called her, talked to her a little bit, said, what do you know, what can you tell me? She said, the program has been very successful when it's used properly. However, it was difficult to launch. And one of the difficulties in launching the program, I had to give some of the ramifications of who's responsible for what. Most of the people are protected under the Samaritan laws, but first responders have to be careful as well too. So that's something that this organization is looking at. So right now, a professor from Westfield State, Jennifer Holden, is pretty much spearheading the project to try to get funding in place and also get some of the works out of implementation. So they devised two committees. One is for funding, one is for implementation. I'm working on the implementation process. And we'll know more within the months to come. Funding right now, obviously not in anybody's budget. So this is certainly something for fiscal twenty-four. I spoke also with the Westfield Dispatch Center Director, Nina Bars, and had asked if she had been put on it. She said, this would probably be something that would become part of their budget, something that they would maintain and manage. There's a large IT component to this. Westfield's been looking at that. They have some pretty good IT people who have been looking at this program throughout the whole process to see what the implementation is like. Once it's up and running, it's kind of a set it and forget it type of program. The big thing is the campaigning to get people involved, to let people know that it's out there. It's a simple app. It's free for the users on their phones. And you can set it up to, to locate, you know, if you're in a specific community, if you're on vacation, you could look to see if that community is involved with Pulse Point. You can sign on as a user and maybe someday you could be a hero in another community. But right now it's designed for the communities you're in. You sign up. It asks you a couple of questions about your level of experience, what you're capable of doing. And that's how it kind of qualifies what calls you get and where you respond to. So here's your cost of the program. They estimate it'd be about twenty-three thousand dollars. That would be shared. And I'm not quite sure if Westfield State is looking at funding some of this as well too, because when you think about it, the campus certainly is a great location to have. You have a lot of people at Westfield State that are taking nursing programs, EMT programs. So there's a lot of people that are qualified for CPR. So that certainly would be a good area for them, not just to be able to use the program, but to give that introduction to it and to kind of the marketing of it to get it out there. So that's kind of where some of the hotspots are right now and things look forward to going, you know, as the progress progresses.
It's dying?
It's dead.
Okay.
So I think the next step is kind of, you know, the website does a very good, a very good frequently asked question section to highlight some of the features of it, how it functions, what it's capable of doing, there are even some of the limitations of it as well too. And they talked about this isn't for everybody. This is not for, you know, just the regular Joe who doesn't know how to do CPR. You really need to know what you're doing. So that would be the first one that would respond. They address some of the concerns about, well, the general public is going to show up at my house. And it's not the general public. It is a qualified first responder in your community that would be off-duty to get this real quick notification that they're blocks away. You can initiate that process. So there's still a lot of work to be done on the foundation of it to figure out if it's a system that's good for us. I think right now with the merger of Westfield Dispatch, it's a good time to look at this seriously and consider it as something that could be implemented. But it's still, there's a lot to it. So I just kind of wanted to get it out there, say this is what we are, and here's some talk about it. This is what we're looking at right now. The plan was to get government involved after we kind of had that pre-meeting to see if there was an interest in it. So I know that Westfield Mayor is certainly involved and we'd like to have somebody from Southwick involved. We're just doing some preliminary meetings next. I think we'll probably be at the summer, late August, early September, going to have another group meeting where everybody's involved, all the stakeholders there to discuss a little bit more about what's available. I think funding wise, that there's probably a lot of organizations that like to fund this as a charitable effort. So I think that might be some of the push from the group that's channeling the funding. And I know for a fact that Memorial is involved in this. So that's one avenue, traditional funding stream, thanks. But it's maintenance fee every year. And again, how the ten thousand is divvied up between the two communities is yet to be determined. It's basically, there's a certain cutoff of how much of cost space that you can decide. So as we join, the question was, well, is this going to push us over, is this going to plus more? And representatives in Pulse Point said, no, absolutely not. You're fine. We'll, we'll just keep it where it was. So that's what we have going forward. Specific questions?
So this would tie in well with the regional dispatch effort for the IT lift for this.
It really would. Yeah, it's the right time.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
That's why they wanted to see what's involved in the implementation so that we know going forward. This could be the next step.
Right.
The director is asked that we not make it part of the initial merger. This is something that we're discussing, but it's going to be out. So I'm expecting this to launch in August or October when everything else is going on. There's actually no shopping there.
Right. And then the other is, I think that this does have a dual component from folks that are not first responders that may have received AED certification at work or whatever, and you happen to be at the shopping mall. It does know that you're on the app and that you are signed up and you can be helpful until first responders arrive. I, I did read up on that.
Yeah, and they give the example of a large factory, somebody working in the department next to you. So you could be working in the deli department at Big Y and all of a sudden somebody in the front of the store is having a product correction, may not know that, but certainly could be qualified to help out. So that's where it really is at.
But having a community like Westfield with Westfield State that is minting a lot of folks that get AED certification or CPR certification disperses them out into the greater community where they can be absolutely beneficial, even if it's not quote unquote their day job, right? So I think it's a huge opportunity right now. Mr. Fox, if the, if the chair so decides, I'd be glad to be the liaison for that with the.
I think you'd be a great choice because of your technical background and would assess system. And I think it's a great program. The worst thing I ever saw in my whole life, Las Vegas Airport, poor lady, elderly lady went into cardiac. They're pleading for a doctor, nurses to respond. It was over twenty-five minutes before emergency personnel got there. And luckily there were some nurses there that were trying their best to keep this lady alive until they got there. So an app like this, I think, would be.
It's seconds and minutes really do count with CPR.
Yeah.
And Kevs is involved in this endeavor so far? That's awesome. That's awesome. That's awesome.
I think there's others as well, too. Our first meeting was quite a few organizations involved. But I think that list will grow once it becomes awareness of the program.
Absolutely.
Very good. Thank you for the time.
Jason, nothing to add?
Okay.
Thanks, Rich.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Steinhardt, new business?
Let's see, yeah, I think you may have in front of you under chair mail a draft memorandum of agreement with the library. This was something that was developed over the last week with the librarian, but council had been out of town. So the issue had to be addressed today and it has to do with a series of medical leaves that the library is dealing with. And this is how the other members of the collective bargaining would help backfill those leaves. So, and would like to obviously have you guys spend a few minutes looking at it. But this was approved to form by Labor Council. And it was worked out, the details by the local union president for the library and the department head.
Doug, you got a copy because I don't know.
There you go. Okay. Take mine, I think I might have to.
Okay.
And it's, so what it does is it obviously has the signatory pages for the town where the board would authorize to chair, the union and the two employees that would be helping out to do extra hours. And it shows that they assent to doing it and they would concur to help backfill their fellow employees.
All right, so we need a motion to authorize the chair to sign this memorandum of agreement between the Town of Southwick United Public Service Employees Union, Local 424, Unit Mass, Division 107, Southwick Library Employees.
Yep, so move.
Second. Okay, we'll call vote, respect. I, Jason Peron, I. Robin, sign any one of these? Okay. Top one.
All right, Mr. Chairman, my next item.
Yes, sir.
Relates to the fact that in the past month or so, we had approved the the full board secretarial position because you had taken Mr. Mogulyn's inputs at a previous meeting for the job description amendments. So those were made and put to form by council. And so that position is being released for advertising as well as the Labor Council okayed everything related to the approval and the release of the Assistant CAO position. So those two positions have been released for advertising. And we will see what we get for applicants.
Carl, where did we advertise those two positions?
Well, I mean, for the Board Secretary one, we do it through our our Channel 15 and webpage and other forums. But for the Assistant CAO one, that goes through other major outlets, including the Massachusetts Municipal Association, E version, as well as the Beacon.
Okay.
And it also went out through Indeed. So we're reaching far and wide. You know, if you put it in a Sunday paper, it costs you $1,000. So we don't think that's a cost-effective way. And, you know, through the Indeed mechanism, you know, we'll be getting them. But then we have to follow up with the formal interview applications and town application packages.
Okay.
So, and we're also going to be sending that to a good 20 area municipalities to see what they might have for other people in their organizations that are contemplating career changes.
That's good, poaching is okay, they do it.
I didn't use that word, Mr. Chairman, but so.
I didn't either. You misunderstood what I said, I said coaching.
Right. So, and then lastly, we did receive today through our inter, transfers into our banking system, the first dollar amounts for the ARPA fiscal year 23 money.
Okay.
As you recall, we're due to receive another $1,455,000. And we've received, just like we did last year, two allotments that equal that number, which is 509,000. And then some other number in the $900,000 range to equal that total. So now that we've received that, those funds, that then ties into the earlier vote that you had done on your site visit where the three of you went out with Mr. Brown. And you looked at a series of road projects and you had come up with a, you know, a number of, you know, that you wanted to be up near the 2 million. So you had the 700 from the special town meeting, 300 from fiscal year 22 ARPA, 245,000 from the Winter Roads Assistance Program, also known as RAP, and then 374,000 from the fiscal year 23 Chapter 90 account. So now that you have these other funds in the bank, you can either at this meeting or a future meeting, mark up and take that other vote for that additional 400,000 that you had talked about when you were adopting Randy's recommendations.
I think we can take care of that at this meeting. We discussed it, we approved it, we went out and looked at the roads. And I think we have, already have an agreement. So I'd accept the motion.
I'll make the motion for $400,000 out of the fiscal 2023 ARPA tranche to be allocated to road projects as we previously discussed.
I'll second, we'll call vote, respect.
I. Doug Mogulyn, I.
Jason Peron, I. All right, I can tell Randy he's got his money.
All right, we'll go through the approval process through the accounting department. But so that's what I had for those items.
Okay, so you're all done on new business?
Yep.
Okay, the only thing that I had on new business, first of all, I wanted to talk about the National Motocross that was televised on NBC. I've talked to the police chief, or I didn't get a chance to talk to the fire chief, but no major incidents, everything went off smoothly. It was the 50th anniversary of this. Obviously, there's a tremendous economic spin-off from this, not just here in Southwick, but in the region. But it also helps to put Southwick on the map, so. I was over there parking cars, like four in the morning till three o'clock in the afternoon. So I can tell you that a lot of the people that came in, very polite. It was a good, good bunch of people coming to our community. Everything, beautiful weather. This was just a tremendous celebration of 50 years of motocross. So kudos to our police department, kudos to our fire department, EM, emergency management, and all the volunteers. I mean, we had volunteers at Wally Park.
Wally Park.
And schools. Schools, Rec Center. I mean, this is going to help the park and rec departments, going to help certainly. I can speak as a director of the Rec Center. It's going to help out the programs we have for the kids tremendously. So just a great event. And the next thing I had under new business is the free concerts at Wally Park begin this Wednesday, July 13th, 6:00 PM. And I emphasize the word free, we have Rich Budowski Blues Band, Blues, Roots, Country and Funk. Poor Rich has been scheduled for three years in a row and has been rained out three years in a row. So I've checked the weather, I think he's finally going to be able to perform. He's performed here in Southwick, right here in this auditorium before. So it's a good turnout. They have events July 13th, July 20th, 27th, August 3rd, August 10th, August 17th, August 24th, and a rain date of August 30, 31, if necessary. People can go online or look at the different posters around town to see the different types of music that are going to be presented. And this is done by the Rotary, but also with, working with the Cultural Council. So it's, this is a great event. It seems the crowds get bigger each year at Wally Park, especially if the weather is nice. And they also are doing some other things. On August 10th, they're going to be collecting donations to support the food pantry. July 27th, they're going to be celebrating Rotary's 40th anniversary. So all different types of music for different people. So we've made that announcement, I encourage people to come out and enjoy it. Mr. Mogulyn, new business?
I too wanted to chime in about the motocross, it was a fantastic event. There was anywhere between eight and 20,000 people here. So.
Or plus?
Yeah, or plus, it was, it was a huge number. If you were in the center of town, once everybody was in, you would know that an event that large was taking place. Wanted to thank our first responders and mutual aid partners for all their help on that. And the motocross for how well organized that thing ran. It was fantastic. Just something to put on the radar. The open meeting law extension of remote participation is scheduled to expire this Friday, July 15th. So there are varying House and Senate bills, volleying back and forth. Nobody has any bloody idea what they're doing. So I wanted to get on record that effective next week, right now, all meetings would probably have to at least revert to in-person for members to be able to participate in a meeting. I am still waiting to find out by reading the language and if I have to talk to council if public viewing of meetings via Zoom, that's a no-brainer. Because you can broadcast a meeting on TV today, that's a no-brainer. But remote participation in meetings is an open question mark right now. So we are going to have to see how this is all going to shake out. My guess, they will pass the buck and they will extend the existing provisions that we have to at least March and then probably make it permanent in a bill sometime, probably the middle of March of '23. There is a provision in one of the bills that was passed that mandates hybrid meetings and remote participation for every single board and commission, period. Not just Southwick, every board and commission in every community in the Commonwealth. There was a lot of backlash I read on the MMA emails from Mass Municipal regarding smaller communities that don't have the technical resources to do it. Heck, we have boards and commissions in our town that so far continue to be unable to tackle this. That's what we just talked about, the secretarial position that was created to be able to enable hybrid meetings for some of these boards and commissions. So I know when we went through this the last time, that there was some utter confusion around what is going to be a meeting and what's not going to be a meeting. But if we have to, we will pivot. Any meeting that was posted, a hybrid-only meeting isn't going to happen unless the law is changed. If it was posted for hybrid, the board members will probably have to be in attendance for the meeting to be effectual. Remote participation is a question mark, that'll be answered before then. But obviously, remote observation and whatever, knock yourself out, we can continue to do that. My inclination is to support having this hybrid thing and hopefully the House and the Senate will come to their right minds as to how they're going to do it. And give it to me.
Yeah, Mr. Vice Chairman, I did reach out to our legislative delegation rep in Senate to ask them in terms of what the MMA's review and position on that was and whether or not that would be determined to be an unfunded mandate.
Oh, it certainly is, there's no doubt about it. But I mean, we've already spent the dough to be able to get there with most of our boards and commissions now. And we're at the last mile in town meeting.
Yep.
Appropriated funds for us to be able to fund the secretarial support to get the last couple of boards that aren't doing it to do it. So.
Right, and recently I signed off on the purchase orders for Peter Cowles in Ken to do the upgrade in the outfitting of the auditorium space that you're in now. Because it does not work as well under the circumstances you're operating there as it does in the smaller rooms.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Steinhardt, you and I can review this and send out the proper notification to any board or commission that's meeting next week.
Okay.
All right. Anything else, Doug?
I just wanted to be clear on that.
Jason?
No, sir.
Okay, so we're going to old business. North Pond Violation Seek Meeting with the Department of Fishing Game and DPW.
Right, Lieutenant's working on that. He's, he's reaching out to the fishing game individuals and, you know, I'm not sure he's thinking maybe sometime in August. And so once he gives us those dates, then we're going to share them with, by inviting DEP officials as well as Lake Management, Concom, and the other municipal boards that you asked to be invited.
And.
Or their reps.
Right, and we can review where we are. You know, after our meeting last fall, if they feel that we've made any progress if they're happy with the progress we've made, or what other steps that they would suggest that we take to come into compliance with our agreement with them. All right, so we'll be working on that. Dave Sutton already talked to us about the HBAC. Must be complete, I think everybody, we've talked about it at our last meeting, the sewer system, IMA, City of Westfield.
Yeah, the town attorney has reached out with the city attorney in Westfield about the need to move that along. Because even though the effective date would be next October of 2023, it's still anything that we would have to do for a successor agreement, I believe has to be approved at the May town meeting.
And I agree with you. It, you know, if we're talking dollars and cents, we're going to have to know during the budget season so that we can present it to the voters at the.
Yeah, because, right, town meeting has to authorize you to enter into that particular kind of IMA because it's a long-term agreement.
Right. All right, the appointment process. According to the paper, we had a few hiccups, you know, so we're going to have to continue working to make sure that and I think I can work with you, Mr. Steinhardt, for our next meeting to see how we can refine this. I know, Doug, you did a tremendous job working out the different things. And we're trying to make sure that it's implemented properly. So we're getting there, we're being very cautious because we have no intention of getting the Town of Southwick into any, any problems. So it's a process and we will, we'll work through it and we're going to do it properly. Deputy Fire Chief recruitment process, they're doing a, an assessment. We have two candidates, I think they're both internal candidates. And Fire Chief and Deputy Fire Chief and Mr. Steinhardt are involved. And I forget who else, Carl?
There was, I think, a member of the, a member of the department also.
Okay, correct. So that process has begun or is, or will be beginning?
Yeah, the Fire Chief is envisioning the end of the month, beginning of, of August for the Assessment Center company to be coming in.
And the last thing under old business that's listed is the citizen awareness of board and committee openings. We got front page, so I think they're helping us out to get a plug in there for people that, we know we're short with historical, we know we're short with Economic Development Commission. And I'm not sure what other boards and commissions we're short on, we're trying to narrow that down this week. Robin, you're working on that. So between Carl, myself, and Robin. So, uh, between Carl, myself and Robin, oh, and, uh, Doug, if I got any questions, I'll reach out to you.
Yep.
You know, and see if we can't get that, uh, process.
Yeah, I know we did have, we did have one individual just recently submit a letter, I believe, for one of those two boards to be, uh, that showed interest in them.
Well, that's good. That's good.
Yep, so if that's the case.
Yeah, you're going to have to.
We can bring that forward because those have been posted for a while as vacancies. We could bring forward that name and interview them at a future meeting.
Correct. All right, old business. Mr. Mogul.
Uh, nope, covered what I had under.
Yeah.
No, sir. Not at this time.
Okay, Mr. Steinhardt, I don't believe we need an executive session tonight. We can put it off till the next meeting.
Yep.
Is that correct?
Correct.
We do have the continuation of the hearing, uh, uh, of the disc golf seasonal liquor license. Um, I was in contact with, uh, uh, our town attorney today on that, the question. So I'll be able to answer that, uh, at the next meeting, at the hearing on that, uh, section 12 or chapter 12, I keep forgetting or whatever else. But, uh, so if everybody can review their notes on the, the hearing so that we can continue it, um, take any additional information we need to for the record. And, uh, I think then we'll be able to close the hearing and, uh, either make a decision that night or take it under advisement. But, uh, if you're prepared, we can take the vote that night and take care of that. So, uh, this is the lien I need to sign.
Correct.
Okay. Right above the print. Thank you, Robin. Jason, pass that back. Thank you. All right, if there is no other new business and we do not have to go into executive session, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So move.
Second, we'll call vote, respect.
Aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason, aye.
All right, thank you and good night.